I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I know. She said it a little wrong. I know me. You got that.
Have you been? Oh, shit. You guys might shut your mouth. Yeah. So. How much you pay? Now all of this. Right. When you know. You're. Some more. Yeah. I mean. Two one. I come out. Huh? Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Sorry. Six zero. Yes.
Testing one, two. Ladies and gentlemen, any petition signing that needs to be done, needs to be done outside of city council chamber? We can't have petition signing can be done outside, but it cannot be done in the chamber. How you doing, Miss Spencer? Thanks, man.
Good. I got. Okay.
Want to point that out to me?
Hi, I'm Adam Mann.
It is seven o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the in-person and virtual regular scheduled city council meeting. Scheduled for today, Monday, May fifth at seven P M. Madam clerk, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Councilwoman Robinson. President. Councilwoman Ashafi.
Present.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica.
Right here.
Council President Thomas.
Here. Moving on to item three, that's the approval of the agenda, city council. You have had access to the agenda. What is your pleasure on today's agenda?
Move to approve. For Monday, May fifth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, seconded by Councilwoman Ashafi for the approval of the minutes. I'm sorry, for approval of the agenda, questions, concerns, dissent. Hearing now will take a roll call. Would you please call a roll on this, ma'am?
Councilwoman Robinson. Councilwoman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, the agenda is approved. Moving on to item four. The approval of the proposed minutes for the virtual in-person workshop held on April twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, city council. What is your pleasure on this item?
I move to approve. The proposed meeting versus the present workshop. Twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, with one amendment. Amendment. Then was this a? There was zero accent. I'm sorry.
That's for the workshop.
It's for the workshop. Then there is zero accent. And then you both preside.
Chair off for a second. With comments. So what Miss Manica is saying here. Is that she wants to approve these minutes, and I pointed out to the clerk that my name is omitted as presiding over the meeting. Thank you very much. Questions, other questions, concerns or dissent? Take the role on that, please, ma'am. This is the approval of the proposed virtual in-person workshop.
Councilwoman Robinson. Councilwoman Ashafi.
No.
Councilwoman Woman Manica.
I can't ask anything now since we started.
We haven't completed the vote, ma'am. You can rescind your. Motion. You could do whatever you like.
I was wondering whether something about this.
No, to my knowledge, no. These are the actual minutes, and without these minutes, we had the workshop, and there's no record of it.
I'm just trying to, is there anything else about this? So my answer is yes.
That's President Thomas.
Yes. Question for you, Madam clerk. Never mind, never mind. We are stalemate on this. Okay. Moving on to the approval of the proposed minutes for the virtual in-person regular meeting held on April twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. City council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve. Excuse me. The minutes for the. Virtual and in-person regular meeting of Highland Park City Council on April twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, with an amendment.
That amendment will be?
If you go down to page three up top, it says now therefore it be resolved. There were two names and three yes, three A's.
It's also the matter of correction for Kendall as well.
Right, I was just waiting for that part.
But I even said six B.
For Kendall Street.
Five, the one that I just woke up or the one that Mr. Shafi?
Six B is Kendall.
Right above that would be five.
Yeah, so she, you're correct, Madam clerk, six B. They were three and two. So this is item six B.
Check the vote.
That's no, 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 that's Kendall.
No, 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 Kendall is six B. Kendall, we only approved the sale of one lot, not three.
That was six nine.
Okay. Yeah, the one that she's talking about. I don't see a number on it here. Oh. Oh, it's six eight. Yeah, it's six eight.
Six A is the three-two vote?
At the very bottom of six A.
Yeah.
Should have been a three-two.
Yeah, yeah. That was for, that was for, that's for Healy Springs on Hamilton.
And that was also a three-two. Yeah, it was a three-two.
Yeah, only, only Hamilton, six eight was a three-two. Six B was a five-five even. And we, I tell you, we voted unanimously on it, but we only voted to sell one lot, not three.
Okay, council, it'll be checked.
So we have a motion on the floor, and the chair offers support to this motion for the approval of the proposed minutes with the, this is the virtual in-person regular meeting. With the amendments specified here by Councilwoman Manica and Councilwoman Ashafi. Any other questions, concerns or dissent before I take the role on the approval of the proposed minutes with amendments? Madam clerk, would you please call a roll on item four B for the approval of the proposed minutes for the in-person and regular virtual, regular meeting on April twenty first?
Councilwoman Robinson. Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes, with the amendments.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, my hair was down. I didn't acknowledge you when you came in. Okay, okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the portion of our agenda every week that we turn the floor over to the city's mayor for an opportunity to address city council as well as the general public. Madam Mayor, the floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. Citizens, council, council president. Good evening. One council on the. Yeah. On June nineteenth, which is June team. This is a five K run that will be happening on. At eight thirty on. Right up on, on. Oakland, let me make sure I have it right. Oakland, it starts at eight thirty. It has a Q R code where you can scan it. If you're interested, it'll be downstairs on the door, and it's being sponsored by Whitney Myers, who is a part of the June team celebration. That happens on that day for the parade. Also. The Wayne County Commissioner has told, talked to me about a business loan, I mean, not a loan, but a grant. That she is sponsoring. Her, she has three cities, and those three cities will share a pot that she has. For if you know of a business that might need help, please let me know, and so I can give them. Okay. Let me know so I can take, get them the application, and then they, we have to get it back down to the commission. Uh. Other than that, I think everything else has to do with. The budget. I have. Budgets from five cities surrounding us and their format that they use is similar to ours. So I'll talk about that in this one.
All right, thank you very much. You want to, do we have a question coming from council for you, Mayor?
Yes. It is. Wayne County Business and Community Impact Initiative. You said community impact initiative? Wayne County Business and Community Impact Initiative. Um.
Thank you, ma'am. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move into citizens' participation. Let me front load tonight's procedure. We're going to have two public hearings. And they are public hearings. They won't be call and response. It won't be an opportunity to have your questions answered. These are hearing statements from the public that'll be put into the public record. The team on the other side of that bench will be writing these notes down, but there should be no expectation to get a, an account from the people here. During tonight's public hearing. It is a public hearing. The government of the city, the city council, as well as the administration who is here, will be listening to citizens' comments as it relates to the budget. Do we make, Madam Mayor, was a, was a budget made publicly available? Previous, last year's budget, is it online? Okay, so last year's budget was online. They all. Yeah, all things being equal, there should be an opportunity for this budget, once approved, to be online as well. I encourage people, look at last year's budget. Make yourself familiar with it. When this year's budget comes out, make yourself familiar with it. I love to have people here for the public hearing. But as I said in previous meetings, we absolutely need citizens' participation outside of those crucial days for votes and for hearing. We need you involved as often as we can possibly get you, and we do thank you for. The things that you help us uncover. So we will move into citizens' participation. I will set this timer for a solid two minutes. And fifteen seconds today, so we'll have all the time that we need for the public hearing. Our agenda items. Hold on one second. Yes, ma'am.
The budget is online on the finance page, the proposed budget.
Excellent, excellent. So the proposed budget is available on Highland Parks. You go to the website, you go to the finance page. That's where you can find a copy of the proposed budget for anyone in the audience or at home. Who would like to get a copy of the, I mean, who would like to have access to it. So we have under item five, public hearings. Proposed Water Department budget and rates, proposed general operating budget. We will have our consultant presentation, a presentation between those two. Under the administration, we have the resolution to approve the insurance of the R F P for solid waste collection services. And a resolution to approve the issuance of the R F P for street sweeping. Under the Water Department, we have the, we have a resolution authorizing the contract award to Brico Escavating LLC for phase two, three. And four of the two thousand and twenty-four water main and service line replacement program. Those are the items that are on the budget. Those are the items that we can speak on now during this session of the public hearing. So if you would like to come up and address us, please come up to the podium. I will start the timer once you give us your name and then proceed.
This basically comes down to, again, I will continue with the ethics. Are you doing the right thing? For sale in two thousand and twenty-two, this is all through the website.
Wholesale in two thousand and twenty-two, this is all through the website. Uh, for the water, sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars per month. That equals one million, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. That's twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. For this year, um, two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five, this is the year. Into now, and I actually contacted you, the new wholesale one is fifty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars. The sewage, which I don't understand why it's so high in the first place. In two thousand and twenty-two was four hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred dollars, which equals about five million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand. This year is four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and it equals five million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand. So what I'm trying to understand, and I understand you guys can't respond, will make the numbers make sense on why we see the increase that we've seen over the years, let alone this budget increase that we see not. Louisville has also made it clear that they don't, they already include runoff in their sewer tolls and charges. They're separate, granted charge for the citizens of Highland Park, that's on this. I have more questions, but I only have two minutes. To make the numbers make sense. And let's be fair and honest with the revenue that City City, they deserve.
Good evening, Council. Here, that presence, thank goodness to all the citizens that's here at this great city of Highland Park. I am Barbara Lodge, two thirteen East Grand. Uh, the newly elected block club president of East Grand Rush Block Club. I want to ask some questions, but I'm not allowed to, as it's been, you know, shared with President Thomas. But on April the twenty-ninth, Mr. Garrett was so kind to have a town hall meeting to share about the water issues. And that the current water company supplies thirty-seven other cities and townships, including our neighbor, Ha- Hamtramck. And out of the thirty-seven cities that they supply, Highland Park is the highest charged city under their leadership. Raise up questions that we're paying so much more than Hamtramck, which is our neighbor. Also, well, we were informed that they, they charge these enormous rates based on what they wanted and decided to charge. Not based on meters, not based on usage, based on what they decided they wanted Highland Park residents to pay. My question would be to the Council and this city. And Mr. Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong. Is this the same water company that the city is considering entering into a thirty-year contract? Thirty-year contract. That would have been my question on point A. On point B, on April the twenty-first, at the last council meeting, on behalf of the residents that I represent, I requested a comprehensive budget be presented to the city that would display transparency and accountability. So I'm hoping that the proposed budget that had been set forth will have each department with line items that we can account for every penny that this city will be spending. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Karen Kyle. Um, I'm here because I own two houses at Highland Park. One is my primary residence, the other is just a family home. The city has forced me to live with a house as a, um, a rental, a home. It's not a rental. I make no money off this house. My daughter stayed in it. My other daughter's about to move in. They have given me thirty days to bring this house up to their code, their standard. The house is livable, you know? But I think it's just kinda, it's not a rental, so I don't thirty days is just kinda unfair for something I'm being forced into. And I understand this is city ordinance. I dispute that. I'm doing my part. I've been in Highland Park a long time. But the thirty days is kinda for me to bring this house up to section eight approved. Yeah, I'm not gonna make any money off this house. My, my kids stay.
Point of order, ma'am, did you receive a form from the city?
I did.
And that form said to do what?
I had to come and do, pay the money and labor as a rental house.
So if that form told you, that form told you that you had to bring this house?
Sign the house over to my daughter where she will be, um, all the D, or, and make it her primary residence, or I had to say it's a rental. I paid my two hundred and seven dollars to make it into a rental. The inspector came out the next day. They emailed me this crazy list of what they want me to do to this house. And, yeah, I'm here now because they gave me thirty days to turn this house into section eight approvable living, when it's, it's just a family home. It's just something I lucked up on and got. And what's the phone number of the car? Three one three, three zero zero, seven seven six eight.
So they forced you into a rental?
Oh, they forced me, absolutely. What's the address, ma'am? The house is one five six, I see though.
Sign over your house or?
I signed it over to my daughter where she would have to have, make it her primary residence, or make it say it's a rental. And I had to do the rental. I, you know, I gave it pay, had to pay the money. It was two hundred, I think, two twenty that I had to pay, and the inspector came out the next day, and yeah, I'm here because thirty days is just adding more time than that. So I don't know if I'm allowed to sign it fine. I don't know how this goes.
Okay, ma'am, so I don't wanna be, um, I don't wanna be rude as far as time, but we do have a particular, you've got the, Council Pro Tem got your phone number. We wrote down your address, and if you would like to email. I'm in the email right now looking at this rental property, uh, form. We're not supposed to do this, but as far as taking up the time.
I appreciate it.
So my email address is JKThomas@HighlandParkMI.gov. JKThomas@HighlandPark. I'd like to see those. The, it's JKThomas@HighlandParkMI.gov.
Appreciate it.
I'd, I'd like to see those emails, if you don't mind.
Oh, you want, what, the one they sent me?
Just email me. Yes, ma'am. All right. Anyone else for a public comment on the agenda?
Yeah.
On the agenda?
On the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
I didn't see it on the agenda, but in the last thing right there. How you going today? All right, Ms. Frye, I was, I was, um, wondering when the water rates was gonna go down. We into about eighteen months now after, it was said six months ago. I mean, six months, Mr. Damon Garrett. Me receiving that thousand dollars and some ga- uh, like, um, water bill, one before one after, in between that thousand, we're about the same. So I'm wondering how we still gonna fix that problem. And also, I thought, um, when was the lead lines, when did that project begin, putting the lead lines into the people homes? Two years ago, three years ago? The lead lines. It started six years ago. So we back at it again with the lead lines after I understood, like, uh, if you missed in your area, you have to pay for it yourself. I'm still trying to understand that. Now, I was trying to understand how we gonna be on the, um, street sweeping. They were sweeping last Saturday in the middle of the day, on a Saturday, just dusting up people cars on Hamilton. I thought that was inappropriate, and I was wondering how could we fix these two projects to sweeten? And, uh, ways to where it benefits the city, where we can buy the product and have the city workers uh, do these jobs versus paying out thousands and millions of dollars each year to these companies? Is that something that, uh, I think the administration could look into? And another question, why don't we have anyone watching the water department, I mean, the water station over on the quinder? I go over that way, um, quite often. Um, and it's just tearing down the fence up top, half of it's down. Somebody's drilling a hole through the side. Are there any surveillance for that water plant? No surveillance for the water plant? We're no longer interested in our water plant anymore? Which I think is our key project that we should be interested in. The water department here don't repair anything over there. They don't check on the water department, right? Any, maybe they can answer later. Can I get some answers later? Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Frye.
After, after, I couldn't really wanna know.
She wants to know when will they respond?
I can't, I can't answer for them. They're here to listen to us. They have offices in the city, and they, they do answer the door.
They don't.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Frye. That was your time.
Mrs. Damon, I'd like to set up an appointment with you. Thank you.
Hello. Um, I'm a two-year Highland Parker, and, um, I just have a question. Um, my name is Christie. Thank you. Um, last meeting, we had a workshop where we have had a a water department review and budget review, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I just, my question is, is how do we have a budget review without our treasurer, our appointed treasurer present? That's what I wanna know from you guys. Um, our treasurer's job is to oversee income revenue, funds, um, a list of other things. However, they're appointed. That may not be true, President, but, or correct or accurate. However, she, she is appointed. And I would like to see her do her job and sit in her chair just as you and everyone else. So my question again is, how do we have a budget review without a treasurer appointed and present? Thank you.
For, for the record, the treasurer is the banker. She's J, she's JP Morgan Chase, she's Liberty Bank. When you do your budget, you don't, your bank doesn't come to your house to do your budget. Your, she's the banker for the city. She is not a part of the decision-making body. She is the banker.
I have yet to see her do her job instead of her position.
Okay, she needs to get, she needs to get bonded. Do we have anybody else that would like to come up and address the City Council during, um, citizens' participation, the open session related to the actual agenda? I wanna thank everybody who did come forward to share with us the city. Um, we will move directly into the public hearing. Now, the public hearing is for us to hear you. I'm gonna extend this time to two minutes and thirty seconds. It is city standard. It's never enough time. I don't mind how impassioned you are during your testimony. I just ask that you be respectful. I will not interrupt you. I will let you go over your two minutes and then some because I understand the nature of what we're doing. This is a public hearing. We're supposed to be hearing from the public. There's not an opportunity for us to have a dialogue, and we are only the voting body. We are not the preparing body. We are not the Finance Department. We are not the Accounting Department. And let me be clear, the clerk's office is the Office of Record. This is a separate government body. The mayor's office is the, she is the chief executive officer for the nonprofit municipality. We are the Board of Directors appointed by members of the city to vote on items as if we were one of ten citizens. The treasurer's office is a completely separate office. That role is to act as a banker for the city, to be in that role, to be a banker that handles multi-millions of dollars of tax funds and other revenues. That is a separate office. They have their own conditions per the charter. City Council can require that person to be bonded, and we did so. Please do not forget the fact that our previous treasurer was removed for issues related to personal financial decisions. As a precaution, this City Council required that our next treasurer, whoever it was during our terms, have a bond that was necessary. If a person cannot procure a bond, it is not our responsibility at City Council. It is not the clerk's responsibility. It is not the administration's responsibility. It's based on your personal credit score and your personal financial history, as well as your personal financial education. To be a treasurer of a city is an arduous task. Just anybody can't do it. We had a treasurer for over twenty years in that role with very few challengers. It's an arduous task. When you sign up for it, you should be able to do it, and that requires having a bond. So as we get ready to go into the public hearing, I will turn the floor over to my fellow members of City Council to make a motion to open the hearing. We will have the pro, the proposed water budget hearing first, and then before that, by law, we are required to have a third-party vendor who provided a rate consultation for the city to speak before we have the proposed general operating budget public hearing. So at this time, I will turn the floor over to members of City Council so that they can take action on item five A. That is the, uh, public hearing for the proposed Water Department Budget and Rates for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-five and twenty-six.
I move to have, or to open the floor for the public hearing of the proposed Water Department Budget and Rates for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six.
We have a motion on the floor to open the public hearing, made by Councilwoman Manica, seconded by Councilman Shaffey. Questions, concerns, or dissent? Did you call for the roll on item five A? This is to open the public hearing.
Councilwoman Pro Tim Robinson. Councilwoman Shaffey.
Yes, to open.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council President Collins.
Yes. As of right now, it is seven thirty-one. The public hearing will be open. I will allow any citizen to come to this podium. I will also check online. In fact, let me start with the people online. I typically make a mistake of leaving those folks out who are online. The people who are online, this is an opportunity for you to electronically raise your hand. Our proctor for tonight will allow you to, if you use the feature on Zoom, let me give you a second to do so. I don't see any hands raising, so I will go back to the gallery. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your opportunity. They will eventually populate Mr. Lackey. If you see them, if you could call my attention to them as they populate, we have some fourteen people online for tonight's meeting, which is a significant number. Uh, citizens in the audience, this is an opportunity for you to come to the podium and make your statements as it relates to the budget. As you were told by the Finance Department, the proposed budget is online. Mr. Garrett, is the proposed water rate online as well? Okay, and that's at the city's website of the Water Department? Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is open. Please feel free to come up to the podium, speak now.
Good evening, Council. My name is Charlene Turner Johnson. I have a statement about the water readiness to serve charge. There are several categories based on the size in the first column. And I did ask about this before. There are homes that have these one-inch, um, I guess they're meters. And they are charged, uh, more than twice the rate for other residents that have five-eighth inch meters. And so when I asked about it before, I was told that's, the one-inch meters are typically for businesses. But there are homes, there are residents that have those one-inch meters. And the residents are being charged more than twice the rate if they have a one-inch meter as compared to those that have the five-eighth inch uh, and the three-fourth inch meter. So I think that should be adjusted. I think that should be looked at, because I don't think it's fair uh, when that size meter was supposed to be for businesses and not for residents.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Come on up, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you, President. Thomas, again, this is Robert Lodge of two thirteen East Grand. The questions I asked, I stated during the citizens' participation. Am I allowed to get the answers to those questions in this?
So it's a hearing. The word hearing is the key word there. We're hearing from the public, so you can expand on those topics. And let me pause your time right here. So you can expand on those topics. You can add any additional information that you would like to deem relevant. This is all going on the public record. This will be recorded and your statements will be recorded in the public record.
Okay, thank you, sir. I believe my statements earlier speak for themselves. Thank you so much.
Additional citizens?
Oliver, I'm back with numbers. This is in regards to, again, the wholesale prices that GLEW charges us. So basically, from fiscal year twenty twenty-four, it, it, the water was forty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. The increase that they're imposing on us right now is five point nine percent, five point four percent, which takes us up to, again, the fifty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. That's for water. That's still sixty percent lower than the bills that we received in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So I don't understand how the water bills are going to go up. That's for water. For sewage, that's the exact same thing. We have a three, we have a ten thousand, well, sixteen thousand dollar difference in sewage from that of twenty twenty-two. So we're going down, we're going up based off of the previous year, which I don't understand why our bills were high in twenty twenty-four, because we actually had a huge decrease in twenty twenty-four than that of twenty twenty-two. So what I'm trying to understand, based off of numbers, how are our bills in all of the residents here? Bills are continuously going up. Well, we're getting decreases every fiscal year since twenty twenty-two. In addition to that, talked to GLEW and they made it very clear. Unlike from what that town hall meeting said last week, Mr. Garrett, they actually don't set the water bills. City of Highland Park and MCA does. They provide us charge notes per, charge notes, notes per month, per year, however way you want to say it. All of those additional charges, drainage charge, billing charge, sewer ready-to-serv charge, water ready-to-serv charge, they've made it clear, that does not come from them. So we would like to understand, because you're talking about a city that's below the power, most people are below the poverty line. How is it ethical that the bills are as high as they are, especially if you even compare them to other neighboring cities? So that's it. I, I gave a lot of numbers and that's recorded and it's already on the GLEW website, so you should also see it. And GLEW, again, also states that their sewage wholesale charges includes water runoff. So if they include water runoff, why does our bills have drainage charges attached?
Thank you, ma'am. If I step outside the box, because I'm gonna give my citizens' comment.
I respect that most of y'all don't have terms.
Set my two minutes and thirty seconds. Good evening. My name is Jamal Thomas. I live in ninety-three Rhode Island Street and I want to talk to you about the proposed water rates. I speak with intelligent hindsight. I actually thought I knew about the water rates when I moved here in the year two thousand. I thought I was aware. I went for months with no bill being delivered, service being provided, like a lot of you from two thousand to two thousand and five. Sometimes we saw a water person, sometimes we didn't. I thought I knew. I thought I understood the term monopoly. I, I clearly did not. We are in a water monopoly. We got one vendor in us as if we could decide what the rates are. Now, I run a fireplace, my house is insulated, I use less heat, I close rooms off every year. Somehow DTE figured out a way to charge me more. It was actually warmer one winter and I got a higher bill. I realized I have, I'm the victim of a monopoly, of a cartel, as you are as well. What surprises me as somebody who sat in the mediation is the fact that they didn't take our home. And let me be clear, that was the plan, to take your house. That was the plan. So here we are negotiating water rates with the gangster. We are one of dozens of communities with no control over our water rates. We think they're just doing it to Highland Park. Would you mind that, ma'am? Yes, ma'am. We think we the only one. No, we're just the last of the small, poor, black cities in the state of Michigan. And they don't want, they don't care about, somebody's going to pay water in this city, but they want your house. If you think I'm lying, why is somebody calling you every single day trying to buy the house that you're living in? Okay? So these water rates, as the cartel charges us more with no meter every year, two million, three million, five million, as if it matters what we think the bill ought to be. That's what they've been charging us and that's the damn reason why we were in court for the last ten years. Now clap for that.
Council President, I'd like to, uh, to say something, if I may.
If you're gonna do citizens' participation, you gotta grab the podium, Mr. Ashafi.
That's not a problem.
Bet I could've stayed on up there. All right, he kept saying cartel, hell, I wonder if we part of the cartel, Mr. Damon. I, I want to know, how far are we away from the master meters being finished? Can I get an answer? No answer?
Ma'am, no, it's, it's a hearing.
Okay. And is there a, a penalty being put on us now with this process? Are we late? Because when they first understood of these, to be put in, in the, that December of last year, I do believe. Also, you mentioned last council meeting, you'll be moving down to city hall. When would that take place? That the water department would be moving to city hall? I think that will probably save a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go through the rigmarole, Mr. Ashafi. State your name for the record, bloody blah, blah, blah.
Ladies and gentlemen, how are you this evening? Councilman Kershi Shafi.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to highlight what Ms. Oliver said, because she's not wrong. She's not lying here. Understand the full totality of the numbers. Five hundred thousand a month for twelve months. That comes out to six million a year. In the next four years, by the, about time I turn in here in four years, you would have paid out to the Great Lakes Water Authority twenty-four million dollars in water. No city, nowhere in Michigan, I don't care how big their population is, is paying six million a year. That's what we're paying here, ladies and gentlemen. She's not lying about the numbers. It's six million a year. That's twenty-four million dollars in four years. So the twenty-four million dollars, it was they claimed that you owed a little while back ago, I guess they're going to finally get that money back. Even though the state did pay the debt, they still fixed it where you're going to pay that twenty-four million dollars. If we stick to where we're at, if these meters don't get in the ground in a timely fashion, if this drives out to the end of my term, which will be next year, the end of next year, you would have, you would have been paid twenty-four million dollars by the end of next year. Six million a year, twenty-four million dollars in four years. And that's the truth after that. Even though they got the money from the state, they still made you pay that twenty-four million dollars that we owed you, we didn't owe. So that's such a truth about the numbers and I yield back.
Thank you, sir.
There's no rules for public hearing, is there?
Okay.
Yeah, they are, ma'am. I'm gonna allow you another two minutes. All right. But let's, um, the room is light.
Yeah, no problem.
And if we got people that want to talk, please.
This is my last comment. This is, this is my last comment. So I actually had a discussion with GLEW and I, because I didn't understand why our water rates were so low compared to our sewage rates. And no disrespect to anybody that had anything to do with the negotiations, but the question that I asked was simple. What, for example, in comparison to Allen Park, Allen Park is seven square miles, we're only three, and they pay only a hundred thousand dollars in sewage per month. Um, and I'm rounding that off. So my question was, how do you come up and calculate these rates? GLEW made it clear to me that they basically used the, the, uh, they did a study, but they also based it off of the, the docks that they had from the water department. This, um, and that's what they used to help calculate what their wholesale water rates were going to be. But I asked the question, well, if that's the case, understand that our sewage and our runoff are the same, they're the same. There is no difference in piping, like other cities. But did we do the same with the water plant, with the sewage charges? The answer was no. So my question is, is how did we come up with four hundred thousand dollars per month for a city that's only three square miles?
Or less populated.
And less populated. That negotiation right there isn't really making sense. So I don't know, somebody can maybe tell us why, why our sewage is so high compared to other cities that have, that are more populated and have lo, are larger in size, but ours is over three hundred thousand dollars more than that of a city like Allen Park, who has more businesses and stuff as well. So that's it.
Before you go, Ms. Oliver, let me, I want to write some down. Who was the person you spoke to at GLEW again?
Matt Lane.
Matt Lane and Matt Lane.
You can reach out to him.
No, what is Matt Lane's role?
I don't remember his title, but he has everything to do with the numbers.
Matt Lane.
Yeah, you can reach out to him.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying. Great.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Christie. I'm a two-year Highland Parker. Christie Dur. You're welcome. Um, at our, uh, water workshop last time, um, we discussed the budget and Mr. Garrett made a statement. He said that last year, we had to set up with a trust and that we don't have ninety thousand dollars that, from this trust that was set up, I guess, due to the agreement. So with our trust agreement, the first line states that all amounts paid for Highland Park water and sewer services shall be placed into a trust to an agreement defined below in which the trust distributes such amounts to GLEW. So if, my question is, if ninety thousand dollars that was set up last year, it was the amount that he stated, ninety thousand dollars, um, is that the amount that we're paying for water to GLEW, ninety thousand dollars? Because it wasn't clear in our budget meeting and I'd like to know. I think everybody would like to know and what are we making exactly from, from the Highland Park residents when it comes to the water and sewer? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional public comments? It is now seven forty-eight. I don't see any more people moving towards the podium. The chair, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed water department budget and rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion for Councilwoman Manica's support.
Second.
Supported by Councilman Ashafi. Will please call the role on closing the public hearing for the proposed water department budget rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson. Councilwoman Ashafi.
Yes, to close.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes, thank you very much. Now, by law, we, it is seven forty-nine PM. By law, we were required to hire a rate consultant, an independent rate consultant. And for those of you who are unaware, this legal battle with the Great Lakes Water Authority that cost the city millions of dollars is not some trifle event that the people who are working here haphazardly approached. Hours upon hours of negotiations. I can tell you, my experience, I walked in a room with two lawyers, there were thirteen lawyers on the other side of the table, all ready, all ready to go against our two. So just put that in your mind for a second. Two attorneys versus thirteen. They rode out all their big guns. Their CEO was there, the chief operations officer was there. So this, so winning this lawsuit in the city of Highland Park must have been important where you send that many lawyers into one room. So we certainly didn't go in, uh, underprepared to face that type of audience. And anybody who thinks they can do it, my hero. Right now, we have to have Mr. Garrett come forward with our independent consultant. As part of our agreement, we had to provide an independent consultant to give us information about our rates. That person's name is, uh, is that Mark? Can we get him on mute, Mr. Lackey? Can we get Mark up on the screen?
So what are you about to do right now?
This is the independent rate consultant that has to provide this report.
And you close the, um, public hearing?
Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed. That's to hear from the audience, to hear from the public. Mr. Lackey, can you help us with the screen so we can get Mark center stage?
Yeah, one second.
Thank you.
All right, am I up? Can everybody hear me?
I can have you on my screen, but we don't have you on the, uh, main screen just yet.
Okay.
Unless.
He, he should just pop up as he talks. Yeah, just go, go ahead, Mark.
Oh, okay. Okay, good, thank you. I really apologize for not being there tonight. I, uh, had a prior commitment. I'm down in Or- Orlando, Florida, um, having to teach a class on actually what we're talking about tonight. But I want to tell you. Go ahead.
No, you, you keep going. I'm trying to get you on the screen.
Okay. Um, I'll tell you a little bit about myself and the com, our company. Uh, my name is Mark Boshaw. I've been in the utility industry for a little over forty years.
Keep going, sir.
Okay. I've been in the utility industry for about forty years and I have a kind of unusual background. I have a degree in water purification technology. And I also have a, a degree in accounting. I'm a CPA and I have a master's degree in business. And, uh, I started a company in two thousand and one and we've done work setting rates for utilities, non-for-profit utilities, uh, in forty-six states, a little bit of international work in Guam, Barbados, Bermuda, and several islands of the Caribbean. And we also teach the cost of service courses and financial planning courses for several different associations, including the American Public Power Association, American Waterworks Association, American Gas Association. Now, I was brought in, um, earlier this year to, um, provide certain services and the, the audience had wonderful questions and I, I know my time tonight's somewhat limited, but I do want to try to answer some of those and at least see for some understanding, if that's okay. But if I can go ahead and. But if I can go ahead and share my screen.
He make you a co-host. Oh, there you go.
All right. So what we were brought in to, to, um, to review, as for the electric, I'm sorry, the water, the wastewater and the stormwater department. We were brought in to do a financial projection for all three of those two. Then also to do a cost of service study, which is a little bit different process because that's what identifies what that monthly customer charge should be and what the commodity rate should be. And we did that for the water and the wastewater. Now, what you, uh, we were also brought in to do a rate design. Even though we're seeking approval in a sense for one year of rates, we provide a long-term projection that looks over five years to try to, to do, to accomplish two things really. One is to keep the utility financially stable, where you have the money to be able to pay your bills. And also to try to minimize as much as possible rate impacts on customers. And the financial projection allows us to try to find that more ideal balance. Now, one of the things when you do a model, when you do a long-term projection, it's built on assumptions and assumptions related to inflation, how Glee was going to change their costs, what the capital improvement program is. And in our modeling, um, what we assumed was that inflation would change by about three percent a year. That the Gleewa charges in twenty-six would go up five point seven percent. That's already approved in water, four point three in sewer. But next year, we're projecting that the water will decrease by nineteen percent and sewer by ten percent. And a lot of that is driven because of, uh, we put, the metering technology was put in and we should be able to have enough metering, from my understanding, to be able to submit that information to help lower the cost. Now, part of the reasons and a lot of the questions from the customers is why? Why are our water charges more, um, than neighboring communities maybe that they've looked at? And most of it centers around the fact that we have what's called a combined sewer system. Most communities have separated systems. In other words, they have a separate stormwater system that does not go to the treatment plant. In Highland Park, we have a combined sewer system. Um, so our charges are more because of the stormwater that's coming into the system. The other part of it is the age of the infrastructure. Because it's older, there's a lot of cracks in the pipes. Allowing water to seep into the pipes. That also goes into the treatment plant, again, increasing flows and increasing our cost. On the water side, there's also the issue with the older infrastructure. And that infrastructure is the water is actually going out. We're losing water, which could be due to cracks in the pipes. It could be due to meters not recording properly. Um, but we're hoping that by next year, when they actually, when Glee actually provides and updates a new cost of service model, that we'll be able to get better data to, that we can build more accurately. Now, in the meantime, we have, we're, we're in a little bit of a, we're, we're trying to get over the hump or over the hill, so to speak. And one of the things that the state provided was, you see all this CIP, which is construction, uh, basically construction projects. Each year in the water system, we're looking at spending between nineteen and fifteen million dollars each year. All of that is projected to be funded through grants from the state. And with that type of replacing that infrastructure and that's primarily in water, we'd be able to reduce the amount of leaks that are occurring in the water system, thereby decreasing the amount of water that we would be actually having to pay to Glee. Uh, because it would be a tighter system. So now, whenever we do a financial model, we look out like five years. Normally, when we look at one, two or three years, we're usually pretty close in our projections. But you can see that the modeling is built on a lot of assumptions. And when you get into years four and five, the only thing we're certain of, it sounds funny, but it's very true, is that we're going to be wrong because it's built on all these assumptions. So these financial models need to be reviewed regularly. Now, when we pull all this together, and I'm, I'm only going to go through the combined summary tonight. I'm hoping to maybe, uh, have more time with the, with city council to spend time to go through more details on this. But based upon the projections that we've done, in order to tr- to maintain adequate level of cash reserves, and I'll talk about that in a moment, but in order to what, what are the recommended minimums are. But in order to maintain the recommended minimums as well as be able to maintain what's called debt coverage ratio, which is we're required to maintain. We're looking at a series of adjustments in water and wastewater. No adjustments in storm are needed. But in water, we're looking at five percent adjustment in twenty twenty-six, followed by a series of three percent adjustments. In wastewater, we're looking at a series of nine percent adjustments each year. Now, of course, from a residential customer's perspective, what does that mean? Well, the utility bill in total increased by three point nine percent, which is about six dollars a month. But the problem is if we don't do that, then we'll be violating the terms in a sense. And this, we, it's making it more difficult for us to get the grant funded to do the capital. So we have to prove that we, we're financially stable and be able to pay the bills. What we're trying to do is get over the hit, over that hump. Once we improve our infrastructure, then the charges will actually go down. Now, some of the things that were talked about in, in the, the, the audience questions related to, um, why our bills, what we charge in our commodity rate is higher than what Gleewa charges us. It's slightly higher. The reason for that is Gleewa delivers the water to a point in our system. And we have to deliver it in a sense from that point to the customers. With the infrastructure that's in the ground and the repairs and replacements in the infrastructure, we have to pay for electricity and the pumps or to, to, to do the maintenance on the system to get the water to customers. That, that's recovered through two different components. One of them is through that fixed monthly customer charge. And the other one is due is a slight increase in the volumetric rate also. But that's the reason why that is occurring. Now, we also looked at a second scenario. What would happen if we delayed the increase? In other words, we did nothing this year. And we, we delayed the increase until twenty twenty-seven. Well, the problem is, in order to keep the financials, where we had adequate cash reserves by the end of this projection period, uh, the three percent increases in water would jump to six percent. And the nine percent increases in wastewater go to twelve and a half. So what that would do is over that five-year period, customers would actually be paying approximately seven dollars more a month under this scenario where we did not increase rates because we have to play catch-up. And so what we're recommending, like I said, we're trying to balance the financial stability of the utility with the rate impacts on customers. Now, one of the things with our projections that we're trying to meet, if you look over on the far right, you see recommended minimum cash reserves. Can see it's three million. In later years, it gets up to five million. You probably ask yourself, why, why do we need to have that level of cash? And the reason is because of something called working capital lag. What working capital lag is, it's a timing difference between, between when Highland Park days are built and they get their money back from customers. To give you an example, huh, you may go all through the month of January, paying for labor, material supplies, Glee. At the end of the month, theoretically, you read all the meters and first week of February, you send out all the bills. You don't get that money back from customers until the second week of March. So there's a timing lag, but you, when you paid it and get it back. There's also any capital improvements that are needed have to be paid out of those cash reserves. Um, as well as, in, in your situation in Highland Park, your infrastructure is about seventy-five percent depreciated. It's a very old infrastructure. And the average system in the U.S. is about fifty percent, which makes total sense. But what that tells us is that with an infrastructure with that, of that age, you're more susceptible to unexpected events occurring. Be it like pumps breaking or lines breaking here, here. So you have more exposure risk. So we quantify that also in our cash reserve recommendation minimum. And so we're trying to get you there. Obviously, right now, we're looking at less than a million dollars in cash reserves. And we want you above three million. So it's going to take several years to get you on track and to get that up to the proper levels. But by doing this, rates in the long term are going to be more stable and the cost from Gleewa should come down because their system will be tighter. So that's one of our recommendations. Now, one of the things that we also put in is what would happen to the system? We didn't do anything with rates at all. Well, you can see that cash reserve, they're currently about six hundred sixty-three thousand. We're pretty much out of cash in five years. And what that would mean is really large rate increases in twenty thirty-one because we have to reverse the negative cash burn and get the cash back up to appropriate levels. From a debt coverage ratio standpoint, the minimum coverage we want to maintain is at one point four. In four of these five years without any rate adjustments, we will not be able to pay our debt service back. And we would be basically below what banks, rating agencies would consider an adequate debt coverage mission. So what we're trying to do is, is balance, like I said, the financial stability with the rate impacts. And I know it's never ea- easy to adjust rates, but if you delay it, it's going to be worse in the future. Now, what we did with the rate design, there was a question earlier about the, uh, that customer charge, that fixed charge every month. And I know that that's probably one of the most least understood charges utilities have. Electric, water, wastewater, gas utilities, they all have this fixed charge. And customers oftentimes think to themselves, well, Dunkin' Donuts doesn't charge us to walk through the door. Why does a utility have to charge us a fixed charge every month? Well, a Dunkin' Donuts makes an investment on behalf of the community. Uh, however, a utility makes an investment specifically for every customer. In other words, every customer has a meter. The utility has a responsibility to install the meter, repair the meter, replace the meter, read the meter, bill the meter every month and to maintain that service drop. Those are fixed costs that do not vary based on consumption. And that, that fixed charge is designed to recover that cost associated with that type of the infrastructure, as well as a portion of the water mains in front of the homes, in a sense. One of the questions related to, why is a one-inch meter water charged so much more than a five-eighths? That's a great question. And because a lot of the things, the meters are a little bit more, not that much more. And the time to read them and send them a bill isn't that much more. But the, the, the driver between that is really what's called demand. That one-inch meter is capable of delivering two and a half times more water than a five-eighth inch meter. So that we have to build our infrastructure with the capabilities of handling the demands that the customers place on the system. And when you have a one-inch meter, that's two and a half times more capacity that we need to reserve in that infrastructure. And that's the reason why that one inch is so much greater. But you can see what we propose with the water meter charges is really no changes in it. They're all, there's no change in those rates. And the commodity rates, you can see the increases are going into the commodity rate from four seventy-two to four thirty-one. So it'd be, um, about a forty-nine cent increase in the volumetric charge. No changes in, in the fixed charges. So, um, this is wastewater. Sorry, this is water. In water, we're looking at three seventy-two, going to four twenty-seven in volume. And in wastewater, a slight increase of about twenty-five cents in a five-eighth inch meter. The larger meters, there's no change in the meter charges. And then a slight increase, like I said, about forty-nines, seven, forty-nine cents in the volumetric charge. So with that, I would like to open it up to any questions that the council may have.
I got a question.
Question for our consultant.
Okay, um. How you doing? Um, my question is, have we looked at other avenues as well of budget cutting to, to possibly try to ease the pain of what the residents are going through?
It's a great question. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Interrupt me, I'm just asking, that been considered?
Yeah. The, the, um, what we did is Metro did a lot of cutting in their budgets to try to lower the cost. And they also combined or shut down their, their, their offices and going in with City Hall, saving on not just rent, but utilities. Also, th- they are foregoing the replacement lineup budget or repair line budget item in their, um, budget. And, and it dropped it even more. And part of the reason was to try to keep the rate adjustments this year as low as possible. Um, we also assumed certain, uh, levels of cash coming in from certain, um, certain disputes with customers, so we'd be getting some of our uncollectibles back. So we did bring in more cash. We tried to be very aggressive, which was uncomfortable for me. I try to be more conservative, uh, to try to make sure you have appropriate cash. In this situation, we were actually extremely aggressive um, in trying to make the assumptions of the model in a manner that would minimize the increases as much as possible. Uh, so we did really bring down the budgets and everything as much as we could.
I see you, ma'am. We have another question coming from Council Pro Tem.
Can you tell me what your name is again?
Sure, it's Mark Beauchamp, B as in boy, E A U C H A M P. And the company is Utility Financial Solutions LLC.
Okay, can you define combined?
Oh, yes. Oh, thank you for that question. The, what I, what I mean by combined is you have three utilities in that you have water, you have wastewater, and you have stormwater. And we separated all three of those for purposes of the individual studies. In other words, the picture of the water utilities, financials, wastewater, financials, stormwater. But what I just showed you was the combination of all three. You know, so we combined them all back like your audit does. But to do a study properly, those costs need to be separated. And that's what we did. Then we put them all back together.
All three of these utilities are run into one pipe? Why is it still, is that utility, all three of them still coming through one pipe of the City of Highland Park?
I apologize, I didn't hear that.
A combined sewer system collects rainwater runoff, domestic sewage, and industrial waste into one pipe. Why does Highland Park still have that? And all the rest of, I know it's like seven hundred cities that still probably have this. I'm just wondering why Highland Park still have it?
Well, it's, it's an expensive endeavor to separate the systems. And it's something that takes multi-years process. I know the city of Grand Rapids thirty years ago went through that. And they're still going through it and they've been investing every year. It's a long-term process to separate them.
So do we have any other cities sewage runoff and wastewater coming through our pipes?
Yeah, there's about, they're called, for, for GLEWA's terminology for those is called D-plus. And I'm guessing there's about fifteen communities that are in similar situation as Highland Park. And they have combined systems.
Are paying for, for that. We're paying for everyone's drains.
Uh, I'm sorry, what was that?
Is the city of Highland Park paying for everyone's drains, like these fifteen other communities, this plus?
I think, well, from GLEWA's perspective, they're, they're all paying, they're all, according to them, appropriate charges, yes.
That didn't answer my question.
I, I maybe I don't really understand it if, um, or hear, I can't hear it that well.
Why are the citizens paying for the industrial wastewater and runoff and sewage that's flowing through the pipe? The citizens, we're paying for all of it.
No, no. Um, that, that isn't, um, first of all, if there is industries, GLEWA charges them separately through industrial strength surcharge rate. But the industries also, yeah. What's that?
How are you monitoring what's coming from the industry, like the business and whatever else you have in Highland Park? How are you monitoring that?
Okay, um, what they, what, how those are charges are portioned is wastewater can, try to get into simplicity, but wastewater consists of three components. The wastewater charges from GLEWA, let's start there. One is the sanitary sewer. Two is something called dry weather inflow and infiltration, um, which would be like rough drains and such things. And the third one is stormwater. And the stormwater and a portion of the dry weather inflow and infiltration is charged to customers based upon the, the, the type. If they're residential, they have what's called pervious. And so the water tends to, to drain, but there's still some that goes in the sewer system. Where we get into commercial industrials, more concrete. So more of the stormwater goes in its sewer system. That's why those rates are different. So the industries are paying a portion of the GLEWA cost through their, their stormwater drainage charges.
Hey, Mr. Dushak. Um. I'd like to piggyback off of what Council Pro Tem just asked. So I don't know if you've been giving, uh, um, the budget for this year. Have you had an opportunity to look at that budget?
We were given the budget for the water wastewater department back in April.
Okay, okay. So, so let me give you some numbers. The council president, I'm, I, I, I mean, the, the council pro tem just mentioned industrial waste charges, okay? So in two thousand and twenty-three, the industrial waste charges was twenty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars. This year, the mayor is proposing fifty-two thousand two hundred dollars. That's almost double the amount. Okay, uh, under that same, same line item, sewage disposal is five million two hundred eighty-two thou, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Now, that has actually, believe it or not, that actually came down only by a hundred thousand dollars. It's now five million one hundred thousand nine, one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Okay, so, um, and, and then, uh, and then I'm looking at, I'm looking at a bunch of, a bunch of charges here. Um, here we go, water readiness service. In two thousand and twenty-three, it was six hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. The mayor is proposing a one hundred thousand dollar cut on that, okay? So that actually came down some. The water readiness service is one million five hundred five thousand five hundred sixty dollars and seventeen cents. It's actually gone up to one point nine seven four nine three thirty. Uh, then we have, uh, drainage, he, he, here we go. Drainage has, has, in two thousand and twenty-three, it was one million two hundred and twenty-five thousand uh, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixteen cents. And that one solely by the great God is actually zeroed out. I'm surprised at that. Uh, you got your stormwater here. Stormwater here is two million nine hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-five fifty. And the mayor is proposing four million six hundred forty-nine thou, two hundred and fifty dollars. That is double the amount. Uh, let's see here, sewage charges. Sewer's charges was one million one hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, the mayor is proposing one hundred, I'm, I'm sorry, one million one hundred and thirty-six thou, five hundred and seventy-six. Now, that's a little bit of an increase, but that's not that high. I'm just, I see all of these charges, I see all of these bills. And I know there is somewhere, somehow in this budget, we can make a greater cut than what we have been doing, okay? I appreciate the cuts that have been made. They were very thoughtful, well-planned out, but we need to tighten our belts a little bit more. If the residents have to suffer, everybody should suffer.
Let me remind us that Mr. Beauchamp here is just the, the rate consultant who made recommendations. He doesn't have any decision-making power, nor does he have the power to, sure. He doesn't, he doesn't, he only provides a report.
I get that, I get that, but his recommendations should also include his recommendations. And those, those recommendations are being paid for because I guarantee you, he's not working for free. So, so in those recommendations, I know there's a way to tighten our belts a little bit tighter than what we are currently having.
Okay, Mr. Beauchamp, are you almost finished here? Because we need to move on to our next public hearing.
I, I am pretty much finished. I think that, that was the discussion on the revenue side. But yeah, we can, I, I think we need, we should probably schedule a more detailed meeting to go into some of these specifics. I just wanted to give you an overview at this point.
All right, sir. Thank you so much for your presentation, Mr. Garrett. We covered us by law, we are covered our obligation to have this presentation. We do thank you so much for joining us tonight, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on, under public hearing, item B, the proposed general operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Counsel, what is your pleasure on open the public hearing for the proposed general?
I moved to open the public hearing on the proposed general operating budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor to open the public hearing for the general operating budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. I don't see any hands, questions, concerns, dissent. Madam, would you call the role of opening the public hearing for the general operating budget?
Councilwoman Robinson. Councilwoman Ashanti.
Yes, to open.
Councilwoman Martin. Yes, Councilwoman Manita.
Yes.
Yes, as of right now, eight twenty-five, the public hearing for the proposed general operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six is open. The rules still apply. This is a public hearing. We will be hearing you. Citizens, if you have comments, questions will be collected by the city's administration. We have the mayor here on behalf of the city.
Good evening, everyone. So there were some questions and first, uh, I'm here as the mayor, but I'm also here as a citizen.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in a public hearing. So there was a question posed about the budget where it requires or asks that itemized bud, uh, items be presented to the council and the citizens. Well, I did some research and I went through, like I said before, one, two, three, four, five cities connected to us. And I looked at the way they presented their budgets, which is very similar to ours. And there is no names on these budgets, just the position under city council, what is actually proposed, what was collected, uh, and what is proposed for each year. There's, I actually go all the way up, this is Ferndale, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. There's go all the way up to there. Uh, Amtramic. Just numbers and the items of what is under that proposal, under the mayor or city councils, there is numbers for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and what is proposed, what was twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Also, there was a question about not receiving information that tells you what was expended, what was given out. Well, for the first year and a half, maybe longer, uh, my finance director gave a itemized checklist. Every single check that was written and exposed to the city council members in a packet, and they voted it down. They voted it down. They would not receive it. They voted it down. So that is what is required. And I am looking, I, I know I got time right there. I'm looking under finance where it says that they must present a list of items that is, that is used. So every check that is written by the finance director and expended was in that package. And they would vote no, they didn't want it.
Correct.
So they had a chance to have that. They didn't like it. Well, that's what's required by the charter. Now, it's required, uh, anything required of giving out people's information, their checks, their whatever, that is required by FOIA. FOIA documents you can get by law. And it will be deducted that you still won't get all the information that you need by law. So when we, we are being accused of not being transparent, we've been transparent with every document that was given out and they refused. Just for that. And, and so like I said, I have five other the city of, uh, well, the township of Royal Oak, Royal Oak. Yes, their, their budgets are way higher than ours. They get paid more, way more than most of the people in this city. The majority of the people, I'll just say everybody in this city. Somebody asked, what was my salary? I don't have a problem with that. My salary has been the same salary for ten years, hasn't changed. It's sixty-six thousand. That's what it's been for ten years to do day-to-day operations every day. Every day, not just Monday through Friday, every day. I will give you mine. I can't, I'm not going to do the rest. So under the mayor's budget, it was a question about how many people was under this budget. There's four. Four people. Mayor, chief of staff slash executive direct, uh, assistant, she's doing two jobs for four, for the same amount. Also, senior coordinator and public relations. Those are the four people. And under the budget, and I'm going to move on. Under the budget, under mayor, if you go to the mayor's section, city council, court, mayor. That's one hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred dollars for four people. Four people. But if you look in the other ones, other people are getting hundreds of thousands of dollars to do the same job that they're doing. So when you're talking about cutting budgets, please know that when you cut budgets of people who are not even getting nothing, you risk the opportunity to lose everybody, to lose everybody. Police, fire, everybody. Our fire department, police department is well underpaid, way underpaid. And they can go to any, any other police department, any other fire department and make almost double what they make here. So when you're talking about cutting those budgets, they also have a union. And they're, they're, we are obligated to audit the union and their contracts. That's all of that.
Thank you, ma'am. We have another citizen that would like to speak during the public hearing.
I got a question.
Uh, remember, it's just a hearing now. If you're speaking as a citizen, that's one thing. I see the gentleman standing, come on, sir.
Well, she stood up and spoke. I thought there was a, an opportunity to ask some questions.
It's just a hearing, that was just her. She said, I'm speaking as a citizen. She said that, she disclosed.
She also said she's speaking as the mayor. She also said that.
I did, and I spoke as, for confirmation purposes.
Okay, sir, you at the podium, go for it.
Yes, Robert Lodge of Highland Park, two thirteen East Grand. Uh, for the record, my request, which was made at the last city council, was not an accusation against any city official. And I commend the mayor, our mayor, Mayor McDonald, for being transparent on tonight. My request was based on every department in the city and every line item that the city is spending. And I'm thankful that this year, uh, that those who may have not wanted that information to be released in years past, uh, that this city and the residents have the opportunity to see it. And thank you again, mayor, for your accountability and transparency. And I'm looking forward to this city displaying more of that as we move forward. Thank you.
I got numbers again. Um, so, um, I appreciate the, my name is Carla Oliver, by the way. I appreciate what the gentleman said, the consultant.
This is related to the city budget. We can't talk about the water budget. This is related to the city budget. We can't talk about the water budget.
The city budget. Okay, so I'm going to say that even though I want to talk about the water, but, uh, the city budget, I'm going to make this very clear. Um, I get it, and it's unfortunate that people are making what they making, what they're making, what their contribu- contribution to the city. However, I'm going to say that we, and I've said this before, we spend money in the wrong places. We mismanage money. If we stop mismanaging money, then we wouldn't have this issue. Again, we need to stop subcontracting everything out. That would save us quite a bit of money. I understand some special projects, you need that. But subcontracting for everything is a waste of money, energy, resources, and time. We really need to look deep within, hire people that actually have the skills to do the job, and I think they can do the job. It's just that simple. Let's start u- using critical thinking and being smart with what we do. Because if we do that, then we wouldn't waste a lot of money.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are we going to speak as a citizen?
Yep, got a comment about the budget. Public hearing.
I'm a citizen of Highland Park. I've been a citizen now, I want to say about 10 years. Um, basically, um, I just want to know, I know I saw invoice last time we had a city council meeting. I'm still wanting to know about the CDAC money for the sixteen thousand. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry. Additional citizens that would like to come forward and speak during this opportunity? This is related to the budget. Now, we've had the budget for over a month, and it's okay that we have a quiet audience. We've been going back and forth over this for over a month, and this is our third rodeo. So I will call it once. Call it twice. Chair, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing, excuse me, for the proposed general operating budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Is there, I'm sorry, does anybody else?
I've been waiting for it. Hold on one second. Let me double check. Oh, oh, hold on one second. I have one person who has a hand up. That is Yolanda. So let me, before we go into that, I'm sorry. Let me allow Yolanda to talk. A lot, Yolanda, and also have Ms. Eleanor after Yolanda. Yolanda, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead. The floor is yours.
All right, Yolanda Rowland News, District Three. Um, great presentation from Mark. Still left with a lot of questions and suggestions, but as far as the budget goes, I would like to see some kind of development built into the city council's budget um, in developing them. Also having a parliamentarian possibly come um, and help facilitate some of our meetings. We're three years into this, and our meetings are still being held and, uh, um, handled by some very haphazard. Um, on screen, you can see city council members on the phones. Um, I don't know if y'all know how good the cameras are, but you can see what you're doing to a degree. So i- if, we need you present, city council, and, and I think that kind of training um, will help you understand the importance of your role when you are sitting in those seats. You should be giving your one hundred percent undivided attention to those who are speaking. Um, and other than a parliamentarian, um, um, council, uh, president, uh, also looking at a sergeant-at-arms, um, just based off of recent activity and, um, behavior of one of our city council persons. Um, we need to make sure we're protecting our citizens from the city council during the meetings. And that's all I have, you guys. Sorry, I couldn't make it, but you guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Eleanor, I called you out. Your hand wasn't up. That was Ms. Yolanda, so I will mute her. So, um, Ma- Ms. Manica.
Yes.
Ready to entertain your motion.
Yes. I move to close the resolution, I'm sorry. I move to close the proposed general operating budget public hearing for fiscal year 2025, 26.
Chair, offer a second. No que- I see no hands. Questions, concern, dissent? Would you call the role on closing the public?
I have some questions or concerns that council president.
I didn't, you didn't, you didn't make any indications, sir.
Okay, so, um.
For, this is for closing the public hearing.
Right, right, right. So, you know, you, you asked, is there any questions, concerns, or dissent?
I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, I, it's it because I really didn't get any questions answered on this budget here. There's a lot going on in this budget. I'm looking at, I'm looking at a plethora of co-megalinga budgets that I, I, I need some answers on, okay? I need some answers on this, okay? There are co-megalinga budgets, okay? They're taking money from the DPW to pay for the police department's repairs. That's a co-megalinga budget. This is not supposed to happen. But these things are happening, okay? And there's a lot in here. The mayor made the statement that her budget has been the same, but her budget actually went up by close to eighteen thousand dollars. She went from, the salary went from one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-nine cents in 2023. Now it said one hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. Okay, so there is an increase that I don't know anything about. I think nobody's answering my questions. Uh, there are a lot of questions here that need to be answered, and this is supposed to be a hearing to get to the bottom of the budgets, not to mention the fact that there's money missing from my CDAC that I did not approve of, but nobody wants to answer them questions.
So the key word in this statement is hearing.
Yeah, I, I, I keep hearing that, but people are standing up and speaking in their official capacities, but, but they don't want to answer no questions. So what, so, so what is the purpose of this hearing if all we're supposed to do is sit here and hear and don't get any answers or resolve to this budget?
So the, the, the issue of whether or not you vote on the budget is based on whether or not you like what you hear. Our job is to be the legislative body. We are the lawmakers. We vote. We vote with our resolutions. The administrative branch of our government prepares this document. It has happened. This is the third time it's happened. The city doesn't have any additional funds. Our revenues and taxes haven't gone up. We are currently under a state of tariffs that are increasing inflation on everyday items. Fifteen to eighteen percent.
Going up across the board.
Fifteen to eighteen percent on just the cost of living. So right now, we have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Manica. Seconded by the chair to close the public hearing. Madam Kirk, would you please call the role on closing the public hearing?
Councilwoman Robinson. Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes, to close, if we're closing.
Yes, Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Thank you very much. Eight forty-two, the public hearing is closed. We're moving on to item five under the administration resolution to approve the issuance of an RFP for solid waste collection services. City council, what is your pleasure on item six A, a resolution to approve the issuance of an RFP for solid waste collection services?
I move to approve the resolution to approve the issuance of RFP for solid waste collection services.
Chair offers a second. Questions, concerns?
I got questions.
Go right ahead.
Are we no longer dealing with a, a GFL, or are we looking for somebody new?
Can the administration answer this question for us, please?
Yes, I'm available.
Oh, okay. Mr. Burgess, go right ahead.
Yes. Yes, sir. We are going to publish, uh, the RFP widely. And we hope that we will get additional uh, providers to quote on our RFP. And I will report that back to you.
Okay, so our contract is still in place for GFL then, right?
Until June thirtieth.
Okay.
Okay, I saw Ms. Manica, I saw Ms. Martin.
It's been clarified.
Okay, Ms. Martin, you have questions?
Yeah, um, my question is, who is the city? So if the citizens, if their garbage is not getting picked up or spilled or anything like that, and it's supposed to be reported back to the city, who is there supposed to call or talk to? Who's that representative? So Mr. Burgess is the?
I didn't get the. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Hello, can you hear me, Mr. Burgess?
Yes, I can now.
Okay, so what I was asking was, um, in the event that if anybody has where their garbage wasn't picked up or they're spillage or anything like that, I noticed in there it said that they need to speak to the city representative because the city needs to know um, what the contractor isn't doing or what they missed or skipped or so on and so forth. So my question was, who is that city representative that the citizens are supposed to talk to?
Normally, the calls have been going to the director of DPW.
Let's make sure that we don't get off the, off the order that's on the floor. The order that's on the floor is the approval of a resolution to issue an RFP.
It's in here.
Okay.
That information is in here.
Okay.
But it doesn't name who that representative is. It says that if the contractor doesn't pick up or have spillage, that they are to talk to the representative of the city. The city needs to know that because they can, A, hold back funds from the contractor, or B, they can charge a contractor for whatever it is that they didn't do. Right, thank you. So my question that's in this form is, who do the citizens talk to?
Okay, we will add it in the contract. Uh, but normally, as I said, the, the, uh, calls come to DP, uh, to the DPW. And the DPW, he gets back to the contractor and gets clearance.
Okay, the order. The order that's on the floor is a motion to approve the resolution to ask for bids or for RFQs for solid waste collection services. Additional questions, concerns? Call the role, would you please, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item six B, a resolution to approve the issuance of an RFP for street sweeping. City council, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve resolution for issuance of an RFP for street sweeping.
Chair, offer a second. You call the role for item six B, please? Questions, concerns, dissent?
No, I don't have any.
Call the role, please, ma'am.
Councilwoman Robinson. Oh. Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item seven, a resolution authorizing the contract award to Bricko Escavating LLC for phase two, for phase one, two, three, and four of the 2024 water main and service line replacement program. City council, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the contract award to Bricko Escavating LLC for phases one, two, three, and four of 2024 Water Main and Service Line Replacement Program.
Chair offers support. Questions, concern, or dissent?
I have a, I have a question.
Yes, go right ahead, ma'am.
So in this contractor phase, I'm, the page is outnumbered. They're not numbered. After it says attachment one, there's, on the back of that, the same company, because it says Bricko, they're doing. Oh, no, no, I see it. Okay, never mind, never mind, never mind. I'll take that back.
Okay, we're going to call a role on item seven. That is the resolution authorizing the contract to award Bricko Escavating LLC for phases one, two, three, four of the 2024 Water Main and Sewer Line Replacement. Do you call the role, ma'am?
Wait, I had a question.
I'm sorry. Hold pause here. We have a question?
Yes.
We're going to pause that.
Okay, we're good, Mr. President.
Can I proceed?
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, would you call the role, please?
Wait, hold on. I was answering another question. Sorry, I apologize. Um, w- we picked, in other words, the best choice was Bricko, correct? Yes, thank you. That's it.
Would you call the role?
Councilwoman Robinson.
Council President, I have a question.
We have, we have another question.
Um, how many contracts have we awarded to Bricko so far? Because I'm counting quite a bit. This will be the third one? Okay. What else have they done for us? Okay, who's doing the master meters?
LGC.
Okay. That's a, that's, that's LGC doable.
Make sure.
Okay. Yeah, I, you, you know. And they were the cheapest? Or should I say the most affordable?
Or quality too.
So, so we, so how we do this is we, we open the bids here and we take them under advisement, and then we go back through each bid and we interview each contractor. So we interview contractor, we interview them on price, we interview them on quality, we interview them on previous work in Highland Park. So they met all of that criteria, and they were the low bid as well.
All right, Council President, I yield back.
All right, could we call the role on item seven?
Councilwoman Robinson.
No.
Councilwoman Shafi.
I'm gonna go with no.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes, what's your care?
I said no. Yeah, I didn't say no. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now we're at the portion of citizens' participation. I'm setting this clock for two minutes on the dot. Citizens' participation on any topic, the topic of your choosing. I've been up since four thirty, so I'm running on steam here. I'm an early rider.
I'm running on steam too. Charlene Turner Johnson here on behalf of the Mothers Club of Highland Park to give you a personal invitation to the Mothers Club Tea, which will be held June eighth. This is the annual tea, which is a tea to raise the funds for the scholarships for our Highland Park twelfth graders. Um, we've been giving out scholarships since Japan, Japan bombed Pearl Harbor December seventh, nineteen forty-one, and we would like for the council members to be present. It's a great opportunity for you to meet with your fellow residents and to network and to give greetings. Also, a great opportunity for you to meet some of the former scholarship recipients. And of course, it's a great opportunity for you to give a donation to the scholarship fund. Uh, so that's why I came tonight, but I did want to just bring up this issue of the one-inch meter, the charge for the one-inch meter for the water readiness to serve is charge. And, uh, just to suggest that it's probably not that many homeowners that have this one-inch meter. But for those of us that do have the one-inch meter, it means that we're paying an exorbitant amount of money extra for our service, and we've been doing it since the start it over a year ago. So I don't think it would be too much of a difference in the projections, in the financial projections, if there was some kind of exemption to the residents who have this one-inch meter, because it was supposed to be, as I was told, for businesses that are using a lot more water than residents who have one person living in the household, which is my case, and probably the case. And probably the case of others too, who are dealing with this huge charge for a one-inch meter, and there's only one of us in the house. So a little exemption probably would not affect the financial projections that much. So I want to give these invitations out. That's why I came.
You have them in your hand.
I do. Thank you. Hope to see you, hope to see you on June eighth.
Hey, ma'am.
Uh, good evening. My name is Renee Ford. I have been coming to council meetings for a minute. I think I've only missed two since you guys were seated. Sitting back there, I got a couple of texts and emails where people online are seeing our council persons on their phone, twiddling their fingers, not paying attention. That is really kind of rude. So I can understand if it was a question you needed to answer, you should have that written down. You shouldn't be on your phone. That is very impolite and very rude. The next question is, uh, my district three council person has said over several council meetings, and I went back and I listened to about nine of them, that if the citizens asked him to step down, he would. So again, there should be some type of training for council persons because the cussing, the foul language. Now, if I was to get up here and call you guys all out your name and just literally cuss you out, he'd probably be handcuffed to me. So again, there should be some type of training for your behavior, your language, and I'm gonna repeat this until these council persons are removed. Keshid or Shafi from District Three, you need to step down.
Now, Ms. Ford, I'm using my phone as a timer, so don't come calling me when you're finished. I'm actually using my phone to do my job. Okay.
All right. Hi, I'm sorry, I wanted to mention the Michigan Week Parade is coming up on uh, May seventeenth, which is the following Saturday. We're asking everyone to participate in this parade. If you have a group, if you want to participate as the council, if you want to participate, citizens, your block clubs, whatever you have, please contact Sidney Spike, contact Anita George, and sign up so that you can be a part of the parade. We really want this one to be the biggest. Each year it grows, and so I'm asking everyone to participate.
Is there something going on the whole week?
No.
No.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next citizen?
Again, Robert Lodge of the East Grand Brush Block Club. Uh, I want to acknowledge that we have some residents from East Grand here tonight as we have since the month of March, beginning of March, and we plan on being here as much as possible. Our plan on being here every time you open the doors. Uh, I want to commend the city council for their professionalism in how they conducted this meeting and the minimum amount of colorful language that has been used since I've been coming in March from the top seat to the, to the lower seats. And so I thank you for that, I appreciate it. Uh, President Thomas commented or stated and used the words earlier today pertaining to the water monopoly and cartel. Uh, to my knowledge, those are both illegal entities. And, 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 and if that be the case, if, if I'm incorrect, uh, I know cartel is illegal. And, uh, I have fifty-plus years of experience of living in, in this city, a, a, a product of this city. Uh, Highland Park has a lot of former gangsters themselves. So if there's a cartel running this city, I'm quite sure my, my citizens, my fellow citizens would like to know who that cartel is. And so that we can deal with them appropriately and legally. I also would like to ask, would there be dumpsters made available uh, for the parks surrounding, uh, in our city uh, because of the weather that we have experienced as we do every year? There's a lot of leaves and debris in our parks. And I want to also personally thank, uh, Councilwoman Manica for, for setting up a cleanup, uh, at one of the parks. And, uh, we're looking forward to be a asset to the city. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I just have one complaint about the last time they cleaned the streets. There were two swi- uh, street cleaners, one car parked going down second. Are we gonna have the re- is this the same people that's gonna clean it again? And how do I report it if I see it happening like that again?
I didn't quite understand your question, I apologize.
The sweep, this-
There were two sweepers.
Right, one car parked.
And they went around it?
No, they, they went straight right behind each other down second. So if I see something like that again, who would I report that to? Because they could have been going up and down, you know, streets like Richton, El Hurst, and stuff like that, instead of two right behind each other going down second?
Okay, so we, I wrote your question down.
Okay.
And I'll answer.
So do I need to report that if I see it again?
That's an administrative thing, ma'am.
Okay.
We can't answer those questions.
Because I wrote it down for you.
Hello, Carl Oliver. Um, I just want to make a correction. Earlier, when I kept saying sixty-one thousand two hundred, that was actually fiscal year for twenty-one, twenty-two is, uh, sixty-two thousand nine hundred, which is still nineteen thou- nineteen percent higher than what it will be for this fiscal year. So that's where I'm still confused on why any rate increase. Um, but I also want to state same thing with the water ready to serve. Uh, from twenty-twenty-two until now, we see a eighty percent, understanding a consultant, we see a eighty percent increase, um, in water ready to serve charges from twenty-two to twenty-five. I understand the leg portion, but it still doesn't make sense. That's on a trajectory of about twenty percent per year. For the sewer's ready to serve, is forty-three percent increase. For the drainage charge, it's a hundred and twenty, twenty-three, twenty-one percent increase from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five. Make it make sense. I'll continue to continue to keep coming up here and saying these things because we need to understand. I understand a consultant, but seepage and penetration still doesn't add up. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Hello, Council.
Hello.
How are you, sir?
I'm okay. My name is Devon Petty. I'm the founder of the Juneteenth Community Festival. This is our fifteenth year celebrating this, and we did this for a decade before it became a federal holiday. This is gonna be our third year bringing it to Highland Park. Our goal for this has not even been, we haven't even scratched the surface for what this festival is supposed to become and the potential revenue it can mean for the city and the positive attention it can mean for the city. When we first came here, uh, we were led to believe we will work together to make this happen. The first year, it did seem that way. And now it's seeming more like we're left alone to figure it out and we just gotta pay money to the city, right? Um, this wasn't there before, so I don't know if there was an oversight, someone didn't charge or you weren't charging, but now I have a list of charges that's added into the application. Um, that kind of, it, it does more harm to the festival than good. Our vendors are being asked to pay a hundred dollars to be there. I don't really know why. I was hoping the mayor would be here, but the vendors pay to be vendors so that we can put the festival together. Like, if we give you all fifteen hundred dollars from our fifteen vendors, then there goes our money for porta potties or bounce houses for our children. Um, also on that list, it says that you all want a hundred dollars for games. So like Tic Tac Toe for the kids and Jenga on the tabletop? I gotta give y'all a hundred dollars for that? You know what I'm saying? I don't really understand where that money comes, why, why that is, or where it's going to go. I, I understand, but I, I'm still just speaking what I was gonna speak if she was gonna be here. I thought she was gonna be here, but she might, you know what I'm saying? Um, we appreciate being here and we don't want to ruffle any feathers, but this is a hindrance more than anything else. Um, I'm willing to break bread when we get to that point. But the biggest problem with our communities is we fight over the crumbs before we ever get to the loaf. You feel me? So if we could just, if we could just take some time to let this become something and work together, like our mayor hasn't cut a ribbon yet. You know what I'm saying? Like, none of the council people have cut a ribbon. How do we get to that point? If to get to that point, we had to pay you thousands of dollars? On an event that is free, we do not charge our community to come out and celebrate the freedom that was taken from them by their government. It doesn't even seem righteous that any of our local governments would charge us to celebrate Juneteenth in any type of way. And as a matter of fact, they don't. Royal Oak does not charge to put this together. Levonia does not charge to put this together. They actually pay the food trucks to come to make sure they don't lose any money. So I'm not asking for that, I'm just saying it's a big gap from y'all come out and have a good time, to in order to have that time, we need about two thousand dollars from y'all. It's a free festival and we just want to keep bringing something free to the people. Thank you.
Appreciate you, bro.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Cliff Chapman, longtime resident. I'm coming in front of City Council, uh, because I've been crying out for the last couple of years. I got a drug house on my street. I've talked to chief. He's looked for me, that is nothing to budget. How do we get something in the budget where we crack down on these houses? I have a dope house that's selling out the front door. They do it anytime they feel like it. I've talked to the guy face to face and said, you need to stop. My residents on my block are uncomfortable. I have a resident for the third time. Her house has been attempted to be broken into. I received a phone call while I'm at work and one of my residents that lives two doors down from me was there to even comfort her and to let her know that everything was okay. Like, we need some resolve. We're blocking-
You didn't give your street.
Forty-nine Louise is where I live. Literally, we need some resolve. Like, I'm talking to the dope man and asking the dope man to stop. He literally said he's never had nobody come to him and say that. And he literally reiterated, because I told chief, so I'm telling everybody. He reiterated, there's no one's gonna stop him from doing what he's doing. I'm a citizen asking for help. I'm trying not to lash out and do my thing to protect my block, because my truck was just broken into. Now my piece is starting to become disturbed. And I feel like if my piece is gonna get disturbed by the dope man, I'm gonna, I'm gonna disturb the dope man's piece, flat out. Like I'm fighting for the people. So I need people to fight for me, because that's our position. Somewhere deep, deep, figure out a budget to help the police help us. Because if it don't change, then I gotta rally the troops. And that's just what it is.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jamil Edwards. I just want to talk about Juneteenth. I asked the owner of Glory Market, who owns the, well, facilitates the private property at Woodward Manchester. And by the city's ordinance, they're the, uh, Manchester Woodward is the only place that can have vendors be at that location. My question is, how can you tell somebody how much you're gonna charge on their property if they paying taxes?
Go on, sing it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Council. Uh, well, I want to address a couple of things. Um, certainly, there's gotta be a misunderstanding between, uh, Mr. Chapman and I. Because I would never say there's not money in the budget to, um, shut down a dope house. And in fact, without going into specific details, that location's actually been raided once. Um, and there's additional follow-up that I really can't go into, but never would I say that the money's not in the budget for, for that. And we've partnered with, uh, the Wayne County Sheriff's in the past, uh, regarding that same area. And unfortunately, during that time, um, you know, there wasn't any activity that was observed. A lot of this activity is happening different hours and, and he's been very cooperative and I, and I certainly respect the fact that he wants to shut this location down. I wish more neighbors were, uh, maybe not as personally involved by going to talk to him, but I wish more neighbors would, would communicate with us, um, like he does. Um, and like he said, he, he specifically asked this gentleman to be respectful to the neighborhood. And, uh, apparently that's not the case, but we are one hundred percent on board. It's not a money issue, um, regarding those resources in terms of shutting it down. I did want to address, uh, and, and Mr. Chapman, I'll talk to you also, uh, as well. Um, I also wanted to address, uh, Councilman Shafi's concerns, because I, I do agree, there probably should be some more communication, uh, regarding a budget. Um, unfortunately, that's, that's not my position. Um, and I can only speak on things that I know. I can't speak on things, um, you know, that, you know, my personal opinion on a lot of these things. Um, but what I can tell you is you talked about co-mingling of the budget and that DPW's paying for the police department. Um, and that's not necessarily true. And I know, um, there was a discussion had prior. And what happens is DPW has always been in charge of building maintenance, including this building, the rec center, all the city buildings. DPW, um, I don't know why it's that way here, but I know that's just the way it is. Um, so they've, they've taken care of all building maintenance expenses, um, throughout their, through their budget. Now, anything specific to the police department? Where it's something we request for security reasons for the police department or um, construction of something that we need specific to the police department, that's not labeled building maintenance. DP, that does not go through DPW. All right. So I just wanted to provide a couple, you know, clear, clarify those things.
All right, thank you, Jay. Seeing no more people go on the podium, let me see, I gotta look online. I have one attendee with a hand raised. Ms. Yolanda, I'm asking you to unmute.
It's your masterful.
Yes, I unmuted. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, ma'am. You will be our last citizen.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to come back, um, and just touch on the water thing. Um, I know you threw a lot of numbers at us and a lot of things we should take into consideration, but two things stood out to me that I think are big, and I think Carla kind of spoke to it, uh, diminishing it, but it's the, it, it is the infrastructure. The infrastructure is part of the problem. We received a grant, we should be asking where that grant money went from the state Gretchen, I believe. She gave us some money for that infrastructure. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm along the lines with Ms. Ford as far as, um, Councilman Ashif. Um, you owe, you, Councilman Ashif, and you know, I, you and I have our conversations, but I believe you owe the city and its citizens an apology from the threatening tone and manner you spoke with last, um, last city council meeting. I understand that you can get upset, but at the same time, you have to maintain your professionalism. Um, and so if that can't be done, if, if your ego is so large that you can't, uh, accept what, what has happened, then maybe we need to do, may be taking next steps. Um, and I, and I, and I don't want to do that, but maybe we need to, because we need to make sure people understand we're gonna be respected and we're gonna respect each other. Again, you guys have a great evening and talk to you soon.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move away from citizens' comments. I'm gonna close it out. And we're gonna move into council affairs, starting with the Councilman from the third district, Mr. Shafi. Let's get us home.
Good evening, HP. So, um, allow me to quickly address the, um, the elephant in the room. If I'm wrong, I have no problems apologizing. But I don't apologize when I know I'm right. And I know that just because I'm right doesn't make me right, but yeah, I'm not gonna be able to do that apology you're asking for, because I didn't do anything wrong. I didn't do anything wrong. And it's funny how everything is so quiet now, now that all of the information is out. Everybody's quiet. Everybody is so quiet. Nobody has yet to say my bad or I apologize for the slander and everything that's online. It's okay. It's okay. You, you know, your betrayal is something that I expect. I mean, I've been up here for almost two and a half years. I've been fighting tooth and nail for everything that Highland Parkers need. I don't waver, I don't bend, I don't break. I expect a little betrayal from the residents. It's a given. It's a given. Because it's one thing I was taught, and it was a very valuable lesson, in politics, there are no friends. Because it's one thing I was taught, and it was a very valuable lesson, in politics, there are no friends. None. But one betrayal in particular, I just couldn't understand. Uh, you know, this, this young lady, I have been her friend for over 20 years. When she had problems and she needed help, I was there. When she had issues, uh, uh, with her boyfriends and being attacked, I was there. Slept on her couch for two weeks holding my gun, because she was scared that he was gonna come back and get her. I slept on her couch again another two weeks after he made bail, and she was scared that he was gonna come back and get her. This is somebody I considered a friend. Your betrayal is expected. I get it. That's just the nature of the beast here. Especially when I'm standing up doing something that's right. But her betrayal was very interesting to me and very hurtful. I mean, this is a person who, when she needed, when her bank account was frozen and she didn't have any money, she borrowed two thousand dollars from me. I know I'll never see that money again to help pay her bills. This is a person whose mother and father I love dearly and which I help every chance I get. So that betrayal from her really hurt. Because this is somebody I had been friends with for 20 years and like that, she turned on me. But you know, that's my fault. And you know why that's my fault? Because I let my guard down. That's something you've done, HP. You let your guard down. Just because they're life-term Highland Parkers and just because they're your friends and your neighbors, it should not make it where you can't see their betrayal when it comes. If you had your guard up, you'd see it. Now, I remember the last time I spoke here, I spoke about an inside job. And everybody found that interesting, but you think about it. Everything horrible that has ever happened to the city of Highland Park, from the loss of our water plant to any major calamity that has happened in the city of Highland Park, who's been at the forefront of that? There was no outsider that did that to you. It was an inside individual that did that to you. We have to keep our guard up, HP. Just because we're friends, doesn't mean I get the right to take advantage of you. It doesn't mean I get the right to use you. It doesn't mean I get the right to stick a knife in your back and then say, hey, you probably fell on that. Just because I'm your friend doesn't mean I get the right to manipulate and confuse and mislead you. I don't get that right. We have to keep our guard up, HP. If you can't see the betrayal coming, you're bound to fall into it. You have to keep your guard up. I don't care who they are. And I learned that lesson from this young lady, because her betrayal was something I did not expect. I didn't expect that from Alexis Ramsey. I didn't expect that. This was my friend. Twenty years. I did not expect that. But had I had my guard up, I'd have saw it a lot sooner. And that's my fault. The shape that you're in right now is your fault, because you let your guard down. I need you to put it back up, HP. And hold every single one of us accountable, just like you're sitting here holding me accountable. I need you to hold everybody in this city government accountable. Nobody gets a pass. I don't care who they are. And if you pay close enough attention, you'll find out who are the ones that are in your corner sitting on this council and sitting in this administration and who is not. If you really pay attention. I need you to put your guards up, HP. There's no reason why you should be so trusty. Because there's no way in hell I could get away with half of what they're doing to you. I just had a minor little fender bender and the whole city turned on me, just like that.
Coming up on ten minutes, sir.
Just a minor little fender bender and the whole city turned on me. Now, I'm being asked to resign. Never. Not in a million years. I will sit here. I will stay here. And I definitely have intentions on running again. I promise you that. I'm here to stay, HP. As long as you want me, as long as you vote me in, I'll be right here. The moment you tired of me is when you vote me out and I'll accept that vote out. And you have a lovely evening, HP, and a good night.
Thank you. Moving on to the councilwoman from the second district, Ms. Martin, if you would.
I was gonna say, that would be me. All right. I want to say, I just got a couple announcements. First announcement I want to make, there is going to be, I was notified that there's gonna be a citywide cleanup on June 1st. Um, that's basically just cleaning your own area. Um, also, at the Ernest P. Ford, they're having a youth summer clinic, boys and girls, seven to 14 years old. That's from June 23rd to August 14th. Also, this is with the Boys and Girls Club, so they're doing a couple of things. I don't know if a lot of you seen some of the renovations they have made. It is so awesome in there. I am ready to be a kid again. Um, one of the things they're doing is they're, you can do events and party spaces for rent. You can rent spaces for baby showers, birthdays, repass, whatever it is, they have spaces to be rented. Um, the other thing about the Boys and Girls Club, they're also doing a My Sister Clothing Boutique where kids get to design clothes. I think that's very awesome for people who are 14. The other thing I want to talk about, the Boys and Girls Club is also doing a summer camp. They are offering scholarship opportunities, which gives you a 75% discount. They also have openings for any kids that's full-time or part-time. Also, the last thing I want to do is also acknowledge Rehab Highland Park for cleaning up the McKenzie Field. I mean, I'm sorry, let me double back. The Ernest P. Field that they did Saturday, that was awesome. We went out there and had a good time. And on that note, I am going to say, you know, I'm always thankful for when you guys come out and you hang out with us through all the rigmarole that we give you guys. Thank you so very much. And I don't think I have anything else to share, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Manica.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on now to the councilwoman from the first district, Ms. Manica.
Hi, good evening to everyone. Thank you for the acknowledgement of the park cleanup. That was also with the, no. Now I can't think, but with Sue Noranda, one of our park volunteers or adoptive park partners, helped with that. And that park was stormed. That will be done again. It was way too much for the amount of people that we had that day, but we did get a nice sized selection of leaves and things picked up. The problem is, so here we are, we're gonna speak to residents also. If you can make sure that nobody throws their leaves or where they cut their branches over into the park. So in some cases, that's the case. And then the other thing we're gonna look at, um, I guess a couple of residents, not on Grand, but a couple of residents have some dogs. And so that prohibited a little bit of cleanup by some of the fence. So those are some of the things that we're, we're going to address. The dog situation is not part of Grand, though. Okay? So again, look for another park cleanup in that area. Also, there was a couple of things I wanted to mention that so most of our parks, in case you do not know, they really close at 10:00. So we are currently, I'm working with Ms. Sue Noranda and actually administration on getting more signs and getting appropriate signage up. So that is part of some of the issues that I think that we face, is that our signage is not up or you can't read it. So we are working on that currently to try to at least bring some signage to those parks and, and to other areas as well. But please be patient. Please be patient with us. We're, we're working on that. Talking about signage, uh, the street sweeping, I did notice, and I'm gonna respond because I'm asking this question myself. I asked it to administration before. There were signs put out that says, hey, street sweeping is happening on such and such a day. So we're looking at whether they're being put out in a timely manner, because again, I asked that question on my street. And then I noticed, nobody moved their car. I can't, they cannot sweep your street if you guys don't move your car. And so there may be a situation that they're saying, hey, we're not, we can't go around or we not, we just not gonna go down the street. I do not know. That is something I will ask administration, because I asked the same question, but the same thing on my block, I did tell people. Hey, did you see the sign that say they're gonna sweep at seven o'clock? You know, even when DTE was out there, nobody moved their cars. You have got to also obey or to follow directions. So that, that was one thing on that I wanted to speak on in regards to street sweeping. Uh, and I think it was one other thing. I have this question, and she's gone, so I guess this goes to the engineers. If the houses are bigger, do they have bigger pipes? And that can be answered later. I just, I just wanted to know that question. If the houses are bigger, do you have bigger pipes? And then for June, Juneteenth, did we make some discussion, did we have some discussion about the things that you wanted to do? Maybe it's something we need to sit down with and see if we can get a meeting with administration or, and with city council, some of us, because we can't all meet together. Okay, but because I don't, I don't recall some things. Uh, other than that, uh, some of the things that I probably would have mentioned, my counterpart mentioned, Ms. Martin, uh, also remember there will be a resource fair and baby shower, May 31st at the Hamilton site. So there, there has been some flyers on the web. I'll make sure it gets up again on Concerned Citizens or next, it's not to May 31st, so I have time to put something out here for you if you still need someone to register for that event. And that would only be for the baby shower. So this is our third, this is my third year um, working and collaborating with the Dove Foundation to do this resource fair and baby shower. Uh, other than that, I don't think, I hope that I answered the questions I should, at least for my district and for any other questions possible. Everybody have a great night and just be patient, just a little bit.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Manica. Turning it over to Councilwoman Proton.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'm gonna speak to Ms. and Ms. Ford. And I'm saying the thousand times. When I'm on my phone, I'm doing research, just like Mr. Mark spoke and gave his feedback. We don't have anything in our packets concerning Mark. So I was looking it up, sending it to my colleagues and sending it to the folks in the army. Because I knew, I didn't understand what he was saying, so I know that they did. So that's what I do when I'm on my phone, I'm doing research. So that you can have a better understanding. And I apologize, I don't have your number, because I couldn't send it to you. So I don't have your number, so that's that. And I, um, I think it was Friday, I sent an email out, Mr. Burgess, the mayor, and to the attorney of the city in regards to, Mr. Bosworth, can you hear me? Because you're gonna have to answer it. In regards to a statement that the mayor made in her city address and also on the media, to the media, in regards to Trump taking back the $2.5 million grant that we approved. And we wanted to get the letter or some information to say that he actually took that back.
That would be appropriate to the administration. I remember seeing the email.
Send it to me. I'll send it to her. You know the procedure now. Okay.
And, um, just to let you know, and let the citizens know, I did hire an attorney to be that information. Saying that I can't get any information from, up to you. I love you. I just want to thank my pastor for being here. Because we need him, we need him. I love you guys and thank you. Good night.
All right, thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, let me go stepwise. We had a question earlier. A citizen came in, had concerns about a rental property registration earlier this month. I'm waiting for the screen shared to pop up. Earlier this month, the mayor sent us this email, and it said, as come to our attention as part of our ordinance, it speaks to rental property, does not allow for immediate family members and homeowners to claim an exemption. She let us know. She went through the ordinances. We've been in these chairs for 28 months. And we were doing everything that we wanted to do and other things that we should have done. We spent six to eight months on marijuana, then we spent another six to eight months fighting to make sure that the city didn't go forward, but we didn't do anything with municipal codes. Administration was kind enough to point out to us that the rental property registration feature that is part of our codes right now, I'm pulling it up on the screen. This is an ordinance. Ordinances can be changed by members of city council. I cannot make a motion. It requires one of the four members seated below me to do so. This came to us on April 30th. And I forwarded to members of city council. We have the power to do something about that, although we have not. We have not. Also, if you hear comments about what is going on within the government and, and what people are doing, let me just say this from someone who I've run a business before, and I didn't just run a store, I ran a pharmaceutical franchise. So I was running somebody else's business. There's a simple process in business, how things are done. Record keeping, like the approval of the minutes. For over 20 months, members of this council rejected the mayor's account of our monthly expenditures. I've never heard of a corporation to reject receiving an account of a monthly expenditures. I guess they figured that they were hurting the mayor. Actually, all those records are gone. We have them in our packets, but they're not available for the public. Because people in this room decided, well, I'm just not gonna accept those, because I don't like who's sending them. That means there is no record.
You have no proof. I never said, I
I didn't, I, I didn't say, I didn't, I didn't single out anybody. I didn't single out anybody. I didn't single, you're, you're self-reported. And I also didn't talk during council affairs. Also did not talk during your council affairs. We don't have those records. We don't, the other proof that I have is that those records are not in the official public record. That's a fact. That's a fact. So they're not there for whatever reason. For whatever reason, those records are not included, because this council, you, it takes three votes to approve the minutes and also to approve the things that are sent to us by the mayor. And if you don't see those things, this is the official record recorded by a clerk. If you don't see it, there's a reason why you don't see it. It's because people didn't want it to happen. So I don't recall interrupting. I don't recall interrupting anybody that was speaking before me. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna continue talking. I'm gonna continue talking as if no one is interrupting me. The other thing, a gentleman came to the podium and he said the following. When the term monopoly and cartel are used, it makes him feel uncomfortable. So the definition of a cartel is a group of independent companies or producers who collaborate to limit competition and control markets. There is an automotive cartel that includes Toyota, Honda, Subaru, or General Motors, Chrysler, Daimler. That is a automotive cartel. There's an energy cartel in southeastern Michigan that includes DTE and Consumers Energy. There is a water cartel in southeastern Michigan that has one entity, a monopoly. A monopoly is when, uh, you, but you're not the chair. That's the whole point. A monopoly is the excessive, okay, the monopoly is when a group of individuals tries to control a procedure. That means they want to monopolize. Right now, uh, General Mills and Kraft have a monopoly on breakfast cereal. The term cartel or monopoly refers to a situation where the vendors control it. It does not necessarily refer to illegality. Hollywood did that for us. We have an energy cartel, Consumers Energy and DTE. We have a water cartel, the Detroit Water and Sewer Department and the Great Lakes Water Authority. Those are the, the names used within those industries. They call them cartels. It doesn't suggest a nefarious connotation. That's just what they call when you have a group of people who control an industry right now. Firestone and Goodyear are a cartel that control tires in the United States of America. That's what that is. So as it relates to our water department, water is a racket. The water right now is a racket. And the reason why we were in court for so long is because the previous mayor, Mayor Yacht, rest his soul, Mayor DeAndre Wyndham, and the current mayor have all been fighting the Great Lakes Water Authority, who are giving us water rates that can't be substantiated. That's why it's important that those water meters go in. That's what this whole process is with the water meters. We know that we're being improperly billed for water. We know that we're being improperly billed for sewage. That's part of the process. We get water funneled to us just like any other vendor. When you buy something, you get the vendor cost and then you implement your end-user cost, whatever that is. So that is happening to the city of Highland Park. Every time that we get wholesale water, we are a water wholesaler. I'm not, we're a water distributor. I'm not, we're a water distributor. The water comes to us and we have to pay the fees to pump it out, to service it, to fix the water mains, to have people come out. That's the additional cost. During a public hearing, I didn't want to talk about that. It wasn't my role. But one thing I can say for sure, after being a part of this negotiation, is I didn't know what I didn't know. And I'm actually in the government, and I get the documents officially. I did not know what I didn't know. So I'm assuming to all the people in the audience, there's a lot that you probably don't know until you get the documents and read them. So just rest assured, the information that you have as a citizen is exactly what I had before I became a member of the government. And so the rest of that information is provided to us. We read it. We disseminate it, all of us, with our limited understanding. We extrapolate the information. I went to mediation. Mr. Al Shoppe went to mediation. I'm sure he will attest that that process is fairly complicated, particularly when you have two lawyers in a room with you, and there are 13 lawyers in the other room. So I just wanted to clarify that. There's nothing that's happening up here to confuse you. One thing I can tell you for a fact, the more that you know, the less you're certain of. We know a lot more information than you do, which is why we don't come out with absolute certainty about some things, because the more information that you have, the more complex the problem becomes. So as you look at us up here on this dais, and you say, "You city council did this," or "You people did that," we're extrapolating the information just like you are. We just represent the citizens, and we have an opportunity to vote our conscience and what we think is a good decision. For fear of God and fear of being wrong, we all vote our conscience. So I can't criticize anybody else's vote. I'll just say that we are extrapolating this information. One day, if you sit in these chairs, you will know for sure. Everybody likes a good hot dog. Nobody ever wants to see how they're made. Because if you knew, you wouldn't either, okay? That's all I have tonight. Other than the last thing is that, um, this man, Matt Lane, he wasn't at the negotiating table. All right, so Chair, we entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor? Thank you.